Maybe call.
I got some.
Seven.
Oh, wait, you're a flatterer. You're lying, so.
And I'm glad I did. Meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Please come to a word. Adequate notice of this meeting is required by the Open Public Meeting Act.
In it.
Uh, notice was provided in January of twenty twenty three. Copy of the notice specifying the date time and occasion was posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall. Three male of the messenger consented current administration. Uh, I'm sorry, two, yeah. And three male of the book administrator. Uh, roll call, please.
Sharon Nata?
Here.
Misses Zinski?
Here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Brum?
Here.
Miss Adair?
Here.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Plasko?
Here.
Mr. Criskey?
Here.
Mr. Cleveland?
Here.
Mr. Addicks?
Here.
Miss Warren?
Here.
I present the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we got a group of minutes for April twelfth. So move.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Okay, roll call.
Sharon Nata?
Yes.
Misses Zinski?
I wasn't here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brum?
Yes.
Miss Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Criskey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Oh, Miss Warren?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, we have, uh, two A R B approvals. One for Tesudo and one for Easy Check Market. I'm okay with both of them. And if anybody has any questions, I'll move them both then.
I'll say.
Sharon Nata?
Yes.
Misses Zinski?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brum?
Yes.
Miss Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Criskey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Chairman, I have a question on the, on the easy, on the market side. The sign was up and then they've been taking that. I guess that was, it was not an approved sign, which is why it was, it was right. Because I was surprised, I drove by, I saw the sign up, I said, we.
Now, is that the O for altitude or sign?
Yeah. He was easy check.
Yeah, he, he was mistakenly directed and taken down subsequently to the approvals.
I was just surprised to see it up because I didn't remember.
It jumped out.
Well, that means they, they want to be open, so that's, that's a carry.
It's been plus too long.
Okay, uh, next we have, um, an ordinance which has been sent to us from Borough Council regarding sidewalk cafes. I think some of the changes are pretty self-evident. I'm not sure that I go along with this in large part because a lot of it, it has been in place for twenty-five years and it's gotten to the point where nothing is being enforced. None of the rules about the, the barriers that need to be there, the distance from the sidewalk, um, the clear walking distance and removal of the barriers and tables and chairs when the season's over. Not to mention on a daily basis. What I had hoped we could do this year was to convene a, a committee of the planning board to discuss with the restaurant owners what they felt their needs were and, and why weren't they able to comply with the rules? And see if we can't craft something that makes sense for them and for the pedestrians who use the sidewalk. And I think that the, uh, you know, if you're going to enforce it, I think there should be some provision in here where people get a warning first. You get a warning and a copy of the ordinance and say, okay, you have fourteen days, thirty days to fix the problem before the imposition of fines.
Bernie, I think that we should not allow a, a dismissal of my recite plan approval.
I agree.
They should be told upfront, if you want a sidewalk cafe, here are the rules. And also defer the rules to pedestrians. Right now, if somebody has a, let's say, a twenty-five foot setback off, off the curb and they're told they can go to twenty feet, you still have to have three feet of walking. They're going to defer to themselves and not to the walkers. We're supposed to have three feet.
More than, more than twenty.
I think it's, that's more than six feet. Yeah, like it's really three feet.
So if you were to walk down the street with a yardstick and anything needs to slap, it's got to move. We shouldn't give them, oh, you have two weeks to fix it. No, our now. Our now, because when somebody trips and falls or somebody who's in a wheelchair or baby carriage, you name it, and they're dumped into the sidewalk because a restaurant is a little bit more aggressive.
I, I can argue with that. I, I think that until there's some active enforcement and, and distribution of what the rules are, I don't think we should be assessing fines.
I, I would agree with that.
Or changing anything.
Yes. I, I would also think that the D S A could help themselves dramatically by simply doing what they've been asking to do for ten years. Get rid of retriever, take out the planters and decide why I know they want to do that going forward. But if they want more walk space.
We've been talking about this for five years.
I, I, I understand, I understand, I understand. I understand, I agree. Nobody wants to be the bad guy when it comes to the outside restaurants. Shit, yeah. Because all who wants to enforce rules. Not only saying that it has to be enforced.
I agree, and I think the enforcement, I mean, they have the rules already, what they're supposed to be doing. If they haven't been enforced, that's an enforcement issue. Maybe the town, well, needs to send a letter to everybody and say, hey, by the way, here's the rules you're supposed to be adhering to. In thirty days, we're going to start enforcing these and that's it, and then we move forward.
When is the last time we saw a waiver request, which is the way it was handled in the beginning, a waiver request for outdoor dining?
Sixteen years ago.
I've never seen that.
On years.
They've been very long time. What would, yeah, what would be if it were COVID? It's ninety-five years before COVID since we.
We're supposed to have it every year. You're supposed to apply. And that's not being enforced. So I don't think imposing fines is going to fix that if it's not being enforced. And I think we have an issue with the way the, the outdoor dining has morphed, if you want.
I guess my, isn't there fines already been in that they can be fined for violating right now? So we're not changing.
It's just not being enforced.
Correct, it's just an enforcement.
They're taking, all they're taking away is a minor site plan review and requirement. And that, to me, is, until we resolve some of the other issues, all we're doing is taking away and adding to a problem that there is really no solution to.
We have always handled this as a request for site plan review. And as long as they submit the sketch as is outlined in here and it conforms to what the rules are, planning board has always said yes. It's not.
Well, and that's how we always started on record that they knew what the rules were. And that latter's point, it was always on record through resolution that they had, they received the rules.
So I, I don't know, how do you want to handle this recommendation? Do you, Carrie, you have anything you want to add?
So I had a couple just clarifications, a couple parts didn't, either didn't make sense to me or I think maybe it wasn't fully completed or, so just a couple things, just to stick it on the record. Um, if we look at the first whole paragraph, where it starts with section one of two seventy-four, um, the last two sentences may want to be, uh, merged, just so it's, look like, looks like one definition. Uh, and I think that definition should go into the definition section of the zoning ordinance as well. If we go down to the last paragraph on the first page, section E, um, I, I'm not sure what that was supposed to do, but it, it's just some, I think something's missing in there. Either there's too much language or something's missing.
You're right.
So I'm not sure what that means.
They refer to the rules, they should put the rules right here.
I mean, we could do that too, but it says, this does not apply to seasonal sidewalk cafes.
Yeah, these are all seasonal cafes, so sidewalk cafes.
So maybe it's just, maybe actually, now that I'm looking at it again, I think after the first seasonal sidewalk cafes just needs a period and then that next seasonal needs to be capitalized and then that makes a little more sense.
Yes.
So I think that's probably the way that was supposed to go. Next page, where we have the definition, I think the definition should match. That's a little bit different than the one on the first page. And again, I think that could pretty easily be rectified if we put it in the definition section as opposed to here. Section B, um, say for the initial review and approval of a sidewalk cafe by the A R B. Again, just kind of dovetail, and I don't know if that's okay with everybody, but it just kind of dovetails back to the prior section. I, I could create instead of erect, uh, in C, but that's not what I think you. And then the fee schedule, we talked about that a little bit, so that's, you know, we have to craft a recommendation based on what you guys think. But I wasn't sure if, it says each violation of a hundred, but not more than five hundred for each violation. So was the intention there to say include a fine for each violation in the amount of one hundred to five hundred dollars? Or is the five hundred cumulative? I wasn't.
I took it as like, the first one's a hundred, second one's two hundred, third one's three hundred.
Okay.
So is that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
I guess, I mean.
Well, well, no, but I need to, if the discretion, when somebody complains about it, then fifty dollars the first time, a hundred dollars the next time, one fifty the next time, so forth, and you can keep going like that.
Up to five.
Well, and then what, so they're twelve thousand dollars a month, should just keep an extra space in the sidewalk.
And it costs your business.
Yeah, it's too low, it should cost the business.
That's not, that's not.
Usually, so you're saying it should be raised?
Yeah, I think it should earn, I mean, if you can get two tables out there and have to pay a hundred dollars, you're going to make that in those two tables, plus.
Usually it's written this way for the discretion of the zoning officer, the way you put the fines in there. That's usually what he's going to do at the zoning officer.
Yeah, but still at a maximum of five hundred, still.
Right.
Still costs a difference.
If that's, if that's what this was meant to be, because I could also read this as a fine for each violation of one hundred to five hundred. Per violation. I don't know what the intention was.
I know, but not just five hundred dollars.
So why don't we make a recommendation that the fine should start at two fifty and give a maximum of something higher than for our recommendations?
Yeah, I still think that, that there needs to be a little bit of educational process prior to doing this. And I also think that, that we as a community need to sit down with the restaurant owners and figure out what, what is the issue that they have.
They want more space to have more tables to sell more food.
Yeah, they do want more space, but what is the difficulty, you know, for instance, removal at the end of the season? With, with the tables and chairs in the snow.
You're crazy. They don't want to hold it because if it's a nice day, you can't.
They have no store, I bet you, because they have no storage, yes, no storage. So like, they get, they kind of, they, because if you watch a lot of these restaurants, they'll pull them into the front of their restaurants. Like if there's a, something going on that they have to do most frequently for the winter, they have no storage on site. So I think a lot of them just leave them there.
Well, that shouldn't be.
No.
So I, I think my recommendation would be that, that the council will hold off on approving this until we can get some better input. And, you know, I think all of us have views to sidewalks. We know what the, the issues are from a pedestrian perspective. Let's get some of the restaurant owners together and see what.
I don't, I mean, I, no, I, I, I don't know what we're looking for from the restaurant owners. I, I mean, they're going to ask for as much as they can get, obviously. If they're, educate them, right?
Yeah.
I think educating them, when you talk about.
Rules, then, then they can talk about the enforcement.
And then the enforcement, which that's not us, that's going to start doing some soft enforcement. Yes. Because tomorrow, the zoning officer is going to violate somebody. You can't stop that. No one can.
Why are they not violating?
My, my point, uh, I know, I know for a fact in conversations that we've had, uh, with, with Kevin Saluka and, and the D S A, but they have, they've gone out and spoken to the business owners on any time that something does come up. And they've also been spoken to. D S A usually, uh, makes them everyone aware at the beginning of the season when they start doing this. So I, I know because it has come, obviously, to our, our table, uh, to have this discussion. So it's not, it's not a lack of understanding, it's not a lack of, oh, oops, we didn't know.
But we enforce it, so why wouldn't they stop it?
So it is enforced. It is, it is enforced, it's just that Rob becomes as that, just like everything else in town. Like, say your grass is too high, Jason's going to call to make that complaint. Um, and, and he does, uh, I'm just kidding. But my point, though, is that these are all things that, you know, we, our, our officials that we have, our business, they've got a lot of stuff going on today, so I would say that they should go around and violate those, and out violate. I just did the same thing. But again, if that's what we're looking at here, then we need to set up a clear guideline, because this says periodically. If you feel as though periodically is not fluent, is not clear enough, then maybe that's some language that we'll get to change. Because at the end of the day, they're going to go by periodically or they're going to go by when they're asked to go by.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, as in, you know, I don't want our zoning officer out there with the tape measure every day, double checking everybody's every day to see if they came out too far the night before. Uh, you know, I, I don't want to be ridiculous about that.
But I don't think they've issued any fines, so they might go and say, please move the tables back. And then the person's like, sure, and then, we have no repercussions.
Correct, and that's kind of.
That's the problem, there hasn't really been enforcement where fines have been given, thank you. And I think, that's what I think is listed here. And I think we also have to, um, you know, taking the other point, I think we have to be fair and listen and address the issues that some of the restaurants that are at a disadvantage of the planners have. Like, it's not fair, they haven't, we want them there. I'm not, I would, I love the sidewalk cafes.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't like it when they're in the planner and during, on a busy, busy Friday night, it's ridiculous. It is extremely dangerous. So, you know, but I don't think, I think they're at a disadvantage. How can we work with them to get that disadvantage removed so that they can eat more easily and now with no constraints comply with the regulations? So I would think that as businesses in, in that district, they should, the D S A should be listening to them and taking out those planters, they say. You would think so.
They, they are, and that's why they've come up with the streets scheme, that's what they're working on, where they will be remodeling the downtown and they will be getting rid of those planters and they will be changing it up so that way it's not as much.
What's the timeline of it?
Long.
Yes.
That's not acceptable. Yeah, it's not what we've been talking about for over ten years.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, like, we've been talking about this a very long time. I was on the tree committee, over ten years ago, yes, we were the tree, tree committee.
Right.
And, you know, and we made, we made the same recommendation, there was a, Tavia, tree back tree. And we went tree by tree.
I didn't want.
So I would just, before, one last thing. I, I think that if the board wants to make a recommendation to table this and whether it's me with, with business owners, whatever the case may be, I think that's certainly fine, but since the governing body doesn't have to take that recommendation, we may want also saying, in the event that they decide to proceed here, the additional recommendations that we have.
I agree. Yeah, I, I think we should give recommendations because I don't want to delay it and none of it gets in there.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Part of it is going to be when someone gets hurt. And the Borough Council, if they ignore our recommendations and someone gets hurt, it's going to be sad because the law says, how many zeros do you want at the end of your chat? Because your baby fell into the street or you tripped and fell because of sidewalk. Planter and, and the restaurant seats, you got to do something about this sooner rather than later. You can't just kick it down the road because someone's going to get hurt. It's just a matter of time, it's just a matter of time. And when they find out that, oh, they had an opportunity to fix it, when they didn't, how many zeros do you want at the end of your chat? That's what's going to happen, it's going to be a loss.
That's, that's why it's here before this board.
Yeah.
That's why the council wants it.
Right. And so, so we're saying, you know, I, I think we don't want to do anything until we have a, a meeting of minds with the D S A and some of the restaurant owners, because it's not just the restaurant owners that are affected by this. Every sidewalk cafe might be next to a business that has nothing to do with outdoor. And their restaurant is being, or their, their, their story or business is being blocked by the sidewalk cafe, you know, they get it. So it's not just sidewalk cafe issue, it's a D S A problem, but it's all the businesses. And for anybody who happens to be walking down the street who doesn't.
Well, I guess my question is, if we're not, hold on, if we're not doing enforcement now, what, what does this really? What does this do? I know, I mean, to, to Roger's point, he's saying that's why it's before us in the board. Why? To re, to change something that's not being enforced now, I don't, that's what I'm, I'm confused about. Me too. Uh, what, what is the purpose of us having to review this, kicking it to us to say, make recommendations when, you know, I think we're all in favor of enforcement?
Would that be in our language?
That, you know, but it has to be truly enforced. Well, that's just it, we don't know if the existing ordinance works or not because we haven't enforced it. Right. So we're rewriting something that might not need to be rewritten to some extent, that's the thing, I think that we're.
Did the push come from, did it come from the D S A to change this?
Yes.
So what did they say about, what they put on doing to assist them?
Well, that's my understanding that every sidewalk cafe has to reapply. That there's, there's no continuing.
Well, we did that, so if they were a bad actor one year and they came to reapply, we could, we had some control over saying, you've been a bad actor, you know, you can't do it this year. There was another way of reinforcing. That was our, that was our way to enforce it. And that's, and that's why the fee to come back is thirty dollars, something ridiculously low, because it wasn't to penalize them, but it was our way of keeping a check on the cafes. And if they were bad actors and had not violated and violated, we had some control over that.
Yeah, I would, I would be.
Violated because there's no.
I would be very interested to see all of the current applications. You know, how, how many restaurants actually filed an application this year?
They just continued since COVID, basically.
And I, I think that was one of the key things when, twenty-five years ago, when we started this, that we wanted to see. You know, show us what paper, what you're going to do, show us the distances. And then every year you come in and apply for that, and if you want to change it, you can change it. But I, I think that that is an important part of, of what's supposed to be done here, and I agree. And I don't know, I mean, our recommendation to get a better system of enforcement, I, I, they don't have to listen to us, but I think that, that should be part of this, that, you know, that periodically doesn't define how frequently they should be checked. And, and I've seen it, like, we've all seen it. You know, it starts out here at the beginning of the season and then all of a sudden it creeps this way and it creeps this way. And there are restaurants out there who have sidewalk cafes with no barriers.
Well, so, so I, I, I have a question. In, in what I'm reading here, they still have to annually submit and come in for review to, to the A R B. So it's, it's not getting rid of that.
I can tell you, having been at almost all of the A R B meetings over the last however many years, I have yet to see one of these applications coming to the A R B.
The only ones we see are new buildings like, that are growing up and we talk about it then. But aside from that, we have not seen, especially ones that have developed over COVID, we would never see. No, I think, and I think though, in the very, very beginning, when Division Street started to grow, we saw a couple of applications from Main Street and on Division Street and then after that, not since then.
So I, I guess my question, though, to, to Bernie's point, though, isn't, and, and, isn't this resolutions? Doing what you want is that it's forcing them to get an annual, come in and do that?
That's been there all along.
So what is?
It's always been a waiver being given. So I, I look at this a little slightly different.
So is there anything changing?
The day, eighteen years ago, right when I became around here, it was the issue of allowing this because some of the council people had an issue with serving alcohol on the sidewalk. And then that was allowed to, and it thrived, it organically took off. So I, I've never seen a site plan application or this board really deal with this because it's been a huge success to a point now that now it's a problem walking down the street. But from a standpoint of what's on the books, our reading regulations.
And that's kind of what I'm asking, it's not changing the regulations.
I hate to say this, but.
You hate agreeing with him, I know.
I mean, I, I.
And I know it's a good night, though.
It's been a huge success and it's been thriving. And no one, when I say no one, it wasn't under a previous mayor, it was organic was the term, to let it govern itself to a certain extent. And maybe it's gone too far, which Lisa's saying, but I don't know if we're going to fix this with words on paper.
No, no, I think, I think this is more a health and safety issue of enforcing. I mean, like Larry keeps saying, this is the town's health and safety. If somebody cannot walk past this way, they step into the street to go around, there's, that's health and safety because the town's not enforcing health and safety. That's not anything the planning board should do.
Correct, and I agree with that.
And so like, I, they were all minor, but they were, we, we did them all on site plan waivers when they came, because they were in, they were out. It was not a big deal, so maybe we don't call it a modern site plan, we call it site plan waiver. But the fact of the matter is, if we, if we as a planning board never get to see the applications, we cannot keep track of what's going on.
I guess my question is, though, if it's going to the A R B, aren't we then approving it from the A R B?
Right now with the A R B, so yes, we can move that way.
So that's what I'm saying, wouldn't we still be seeing it then?
As the A R B would.
You should be, yes.
And, and I was saying, you're saying, well, not right now, but this is saying that it would go to the A R B. So it's not changing anything from our perspective, we'd still be seeing it. Just calling it not a site plan would be an A R B approval.
Right, but we're not, we're not seeing it now, nor is the A R B seeing it.
I, I understand that, it's not, that's the enforcement of what's not happening.
Yes.
But this isn't changing anything.
Well, Mike, it will change something.
Yeah, it does, it'll take it out of our hands.
But has, so, but for the past eighteen years, it hasn't been, it's at Mike's point in your answer. It's that this has been organically done that the council.
Well, it started in our hands and then it, the organic part was, um.
Yeah.
Much later. Yeah, but they, yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, the, the, we get, we're getting to a point where the growth was healthy and now it's not a healthy growth anymore.
Right.
And so we need to enforce this so we can, we can deal with the growth that's happening, the growth that has happened. And I think COVID, because everybody had outdoor eating, we really kind of went too organic at that time. And we need to find a way to bring it back, but rewording this is not, is not going to make a difference. And I think to the point of, you know, everybody keeps saying, well, we're, you know, it hasn't been dinned on that way in the last however many years. So I think where we're at is proof of why it should have been coming here in the first place. So I think that's a really bad statement to be making because I think that statement in itself proves allowing it to organically be done and reducing the rules and not having those rules and regulations being enforced is really bad for the health and safety of some of them. Yeah. So, I, I mean, I think, I don't think the restrictions were much as it related to the restaurant owners. I think that some of them have a disadvantage, which is a whole other issue that has to get addressed, but this doesn't even address that. Yeah, that's out of our direction. So this doesn't do anything except say, let's make less regulations that still aren't going to be enforced. And I think it's unfair to put it before the board us and make us make recommendations to something that isn't being enforced now.
Well, I think, like I said before, the, the concept that it's not enforced is, is not necessarily true. Because I've been out and I've seen restaurants not do much what we do. I know that they've spoken to and then I go out and see what they're arguing.
No, but it hasn't been enforced that they're supposed to come to us every year with a, with an application.
I, I understand. I understand that piece of it, but there's also nothing to stop them from coming to us and giving you a site plan and then go ahead and doing whatever they want to do anyways, right?
Yeah, but then that's when code enforcement comes in.
And also the next.
Code enforcement, so that, there's the other piece of this, right? Code enforcement is going to follow codes. If the code is that it has to be six feet from the curb and all those different things, that's already in the code. Nothing, there's nothing about that that changes in this document. Those are already things that code enforcement will be looking for. We're not asking to look at that tonight. We're asking to put this so that the code, code enforcement goes out there, takes a look at it, that's what they need to do. Sidewalk cafes open fast and the D S A works with their folks that are down there, but the D S A is in charge of downtown. Is in charge of, of the. Is in charge of, of the stores and in charge of, uh, you know, the businesses and the providers that are down there. So this is trying to get them to take care of it more so than having them to come to this board.
Yeah, but the town gets sued, not the DSA if something goes wrong.
Sure.
Well, as a taxpayer, that worries me.
Well, right, and I understand that. My, my point though is that we're talking about enforcement and this board does not do enforcement. The zoning.
Nor does the DSA.
Correct. The zoning officer does enforcement. And all of the things that we're talking about are things that are in the code. It's talking about how far, there's nothing in this document that discusses how far setbacks are, where things need to be. That's all code enforcement.
But that else, both rules should be in part of, instead of refer, no, it's, it's referred to. It should be in here, sidewalk has, you know, whatever the rules are. Yeah, it exists, but it's not in this ordinance. It refers to it. So it should be part of the ordinance on top of it. So that here's the ordinance, it says you have to be six feet from here, it's got to be three feet from there, and all your disputes. Whatever the rules are, so that when they see this ordinance, it's part of it.
And the other reason I remember in the beginning that we wanted it back before yours, you know, to your point, adding those initial offenders who kept getting the fines and weren't changing anything. They weren't to get a permit next year. They weren't going to be allowed, weren't going to give them the waiver to be able to go that following season.
It also led.
It was something to be held there as a standard. This could potentially happen if you continue this.
It also helped us keep an eye on how many were being created. Whereas now, I believe, you know, we have any record of all the cafes that are outside right now. And so what I think needs to be enforced aside from the code is the fact that they are supposed to be coming back and applying every year. So we can take a look at it and see that it's still healthy for what's going on. That's our job as a planning board, is to make sure that it's not, that the planning of these outdoor cafes is working.
Yeah, and I, I respect the fact we have a special improvement district, but at the same time, we still have things that we're supposed to be taking care of for the town overall, whether we have an SID or not.
So we need to boil this down to a recommendation. And I think the, part of that recommendation should be what Kara said, is that if you're not going to do what we're suggesting, then here are corrections, technical corrections to these ordinance that should be made.
And I've made a list, you know, if, if the first one is, please table this ordinance until we can have an opportunity to discuss with DSA, business owners, planning board, whatever committees we want to make. Um, and enforce the existing ordinance in the meantime, so we can see what the issues really are, so we can see if the current ordinance works. If that's recommendation number one. And then recommendation number two would be, if you don't want to and you're looking to vote on this ordinance, here are the technical changes we recommend and here are the other recommendations. Every, kind of compiled everything you guys were saying, um, from warnings to, you know, uh, frequency of enforcement, um, keeping it as a request for a site plan waiver, uh, dealing with the fees, making them a little bit higher, um, addressing the plant or areas, um.
Defining periodically.
Defining periodically, yep, do not, yep, um, and, and those types of things. Um, adding the actual language regarding a whole set of reckless leeway concerns, and that could be technically tier two of the recommendation.
And just to point out where the rules are on the application for outside cafes.
Okay. So when, when is the second hearing on this?
I haven't seen the agenda from Monday night until I, I don't know.
I think it's May one.
That's next one.
We don't have a meeting in between, so if you write the letter.
I think it's May one.
But just because the ordinance is up for hearing and adoption doesn't mean the council can't entertain a motion.
And that's, that's true number one. And number two, the other option, I'm not necessarily saying that, you know, it's totally up to you. If we had a discussion about this, but if you didn't have the opportunity to have a discussion, the board has thirty-five days to make its recommendations. So if you choose not to make any recommendations tonight, if you wanted to have something written up for you to see and look at at your next meeting, you could certainly make them, irrespective of the second, the anticipation of, of the second reading. That's, that's within your ability to do.
Can we, I mean, if you were to write something, can you circulate? And then, is that, I would like to get this to the council as quickly as possible.
Before Monday's meeting, because as the mayor said, they can table it, doesn't mean they're going to, so.
And I, I think it's important for the council to know that we're not just brushing this off.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's your legal ability. I'm not necessarily saying that's a direction. So yeah, I mean, Mike and I can certainly put something together, put a letter together, send it and circulate it to everyone. And if there's anything that, you know, I, I've outlined it very quickly, but, you know, you're having to see it at writing. If there's something that you disagree with, you can certainly let council know at or before Monday.
And I can't, of course, speak for council in order, but if the council gets a sense that this board is not comfortable, it needs more information, I'd, I'd like to think they would consider that. And the table and option exists with anyone.
Right.
That, that motion supersedes a motion, you know, to adopt. And then that's up to the council, unless it's three-three.
Look, I don't know what it would be. It could be, it could be seven, it could be six extensions too.
But I think if, if you can get something over, Kevin.
But we haven't seen a single application for a sidewalk cafe. According to the old rules or the new rules, we're supposed to be seeing that with places with sidewalk cafes.
The last one was the new building of A1.
Right, so we're writing another law that we're not going to.
Assaulted law.
Right.
That was part of, we read that was.
That was a break out of the village, yes. And the beer, and the beer place, the village, the village we talked about.
That was a site plan application.
That's the only time we've seen them. But if, if we're gonna, if we're going to write another ordinance that says we're supposed to see these at the ARB, then I'd have to start seeing them at the ARB. So, you know, make sure that if you're going to pass this ordinance, you're intending to enforce it. Not enforce it in the six foot, but enforce it as in everybody needs to put in an application before the ARB for the.
And review only.
Yeah, okay. And maybe that's a different violation recommendation, if they don't see it.
Well, then they don't have a cafe.
Yeah, okay. Well, they don't say that they just do one with the app, doing an application. I agree. I'll win you that.
Okay, let's move on. And at this point, I would like to hand this one over to Colin for.
Could we just do, could we just do a vote on that? So what I've indicated we're going to do, if it's acceptable to that, and let's do a motion to second.
I will motion that we break the letter and make that recommendation.
Do we do a by email before the meeting? Okay, did we have a second?
I think Jason, I moved in Jason's second.
Right.
How do you would go?
Chairman Delato?
Yes.
Ms. Zenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Mr. Prescott?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Rett.
Yes.
Okay. So next we have ordinance twenty-seven oh seven, amending Schedule A for the Eastern Central Business District. And I'll let Colin handle this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. We, we amended Schedule A some time ago to allow, I'm going to have to look at it. Distilleries and, and craft malt beverages as an allowed use. Um, we've been approached by a company that wants to do a, like, always mispronounces, a mead drink. They make mead.
Oh, mead.
Mead, you know, that honey stuff that tastes like, but they want to do it and it's.
How do you spell that?
It's Australian.
There, there, there are two in the state right now which are doing great business. There's, there's this group of Rutgers graduates that want to come into town. They want to take, um, possession of what was the Indian Restaurant on East Main Street. Um, I, I checked all the regulations, we can do it. Um, the licensing is very straightforward. We don't have to do anything with a license. All we need to do is make it an allowed use and it can move forward. So this, this ordinance, as it was amended two or three years ago, I'm just, I was saying, let's amend it again.
To be specific to mead?
Cider and mead licensing, yeah.
It's already good for craft, it's already, I mean, all that.
So mead, if you're not distilling, mead, mead is not distilled?
No, apparently it's brewed actually.
Oh, okay.
But, um, but there is a specific license put out by the state, which is a cider and mead brewing license.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to do it and they, they are specifically, um, restricted from preparing and serving food. They can have food brought in, but it's only snacks. They can't be like what we did with, um, the brew pub where we made them two licenses and, and serve food. Um, but it, it's a growing business. I think it, it would create activity at this end of town, which is required. So it, it, I, to my mind, it's very straightforward. And we just ask you to endorse it so we can go back to council and, and it gets passed.
As long as we don't make the neighborhood smell, we're okay.
You like that smell of honey? That's what you're going to get, honey.
Yeah, but sometimes breweries do have issues, so.
Yeah, but there, no, it, it's done and it's done well. These people know what they're doing. And I, I think that we're an asset to this end of town.
I, I like it. I agree with you.
So I move that we make that change.
I'll second the support in the resolution.
Chairman Delato?
Yes.
Ms. Zenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Mr. Prescott?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Rett?
Yes.
Okay, um, next, under the heading of items not on the agenda, I have two items that I would like to. And, and one is what I thought we had at the last meeting, which is, um, ordinance twenty-seven oh four, which was the, um, the ordinance that would remove signs from the jurisdiction of the planning board. And Mike has, um, gone through our ordinance and, and made recommendations about what other areas might even be changed, any event that this were to be passed. The, and as, as I said at the last meeting, I have some serious reservations about removing this from the planning board jurisdiction. I think that the National Architecture Review Board was created. There was, it was recognized that there was the potential for abuse of whatever power that board might have. And the fact that, that they don't have the statutory authority to approve something. So we want oversight by the planning board. And I think that, that the way it's being handled right now, the architectural review board meets on demand. And so there's no, there's no significant weight because within, within the period of time that it typically takes to get a permit through Borough Hall, it's, it's approved by this board, assuming it's going to be approved. Now, there have been occasions when we have not approved it. Admittedly, they're few and far between, but it's happened. Anyway, that's my feeling. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Well, what it was is I spent a keynote too. So we went to Kevin, Chairman, Chairwoman was there and Kara was copied. And what I basically said is a definition, I think it needs a definition spelled. And development definition per ordinance is the same as the MLUL. And then I drilled down and said, and that's where you see the definition of the zoning officer. I came to the conclusion that, and this is where Kara comes in, this is more legal than everything else, that the only, only people that do development as defined by the MLUL, the MLUL says this board has to approve it. Or it's conforming to the zoning officer's example. That's the only two bodies I see that can do this. And then I came up with one twenty-eight C, which is not in the proposed, it has, would have to be amended. So if, if we're going to go the other way, which Chairman, I mean, does not want to, but I understand why, I, I did some mechanics and more needs to be changed because the comment to the last meeting is that we change it to the content for other sections. So I see changing the one twenty-eight C and the one fifteen would have to be changed. That if this board wanted to relinquish control of the signs.
Well, isn't it, is it more about relinquishing ARB versus just the sign? Isn't that really what we talked about, like that they want to remove the ARB?
No, what I'm recommending, us from the, of the system and.
I mean, removing the ARB from us is what I was getting at, not under our purview.
Right, saying ARB can approve it. And what Mike's saying is that no, the ARB cannot approve it. It's got to be the zoning officer or the planning board.
So can, can we make, and just again, I haven't been around and we've denied one. So can we, if it's conforming sign and it conforms to everything, can we actually deny it?
It depends where it is and what the, what the, some people agree to come before the ARB and have it approved as part of their approval. So then they need to come before us and we can say.
So for example, like, let's say they're sound a hundred percent conforming, they're an existing shop. Do, can we deny it if it conforms?
If it's in the DSA, I think we get to see, there's certain.
Cause I guess my, my thought is, is if it's conforming, can it just go to the zoning office? And then if it, if it doesn't conform, then that's planning over.
There was design guidelines in the SID that were crafted, Chairman, I think nineteen ninety.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that would sure, what the ARB and what this board has looked at is making sure it's consistent with design guidelines. So it could be conforming, Jason, but it's not consistent. This board in the past, not recently, but in the past, like Clucky, I'm telling you, Clucky was a major one. That took six months because people were not comfortable with the message of how what norms were.
What was that, sorry?
Is that, is that the?
That's the design guidelines book.
Wow. And so a, a lot of this was also worked with the historical aspect of the town. So they were trying to keep the, they were, especially in certain areas of the town, they were trying to keep the, um, the signs sort of matching the real buildings, blah, blah, blah. So we didn't have just neon signs everywhere. So, so that's what it was originally for. And it helped us to set up what we have today, which is no signs that are incredibly off the log garage or whatever.
And I, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that the people who make signs now understand what we're looking, they're looking for. Um, but I also think that, that there's a contradiction within this ordinance itself. And at one, one paragraph says that it's got to be approved by the planning board. And the next paragraph, yeah, if, if you look under section C, says an applicant in the special improvement district, okay, that is required, should follow. Within the special improvement district.
Page one, C one.
Yeah. Uh, and then it, then it says further on under item two. Item one says you go to the planning board, item two says within the special improvement district, no building permit or sign, sign shall be issued without the prior review of the architectural review board. So I'm confused about the actual.
That's the existing ordinance that you're leading from right now?
No, this is, this is the proposal, it's a proposed. I'm, I'm confused because in one place it says ask to go to the planning board, the other, other paragraph says, no, it doesn't. So I think that inconsistency, along with, in the same vein that we did the first ordinance we considered, I think we should make a recommendation as to. I think we should make a recommendation as to what we feel should happen. But if the council decides that they are not going to follow our recommendation, that the contradictions within the ordinance itself will affect.
The initial recommendation is no change to what's currently there?
That would be mine.
Yes.
So I just have a clarification question on this one and on the previous, that mentions the ARB too. Are we going down a road where we're, everything going to ARB then? Let's just say if everything is passed by council, everything by ARB we never see?
Not everything, just within the SIB, because if it's.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, just conform, just make sure I get it and that we do. If it's a conforming sign, not within the SIB, zoning officer can approve it. But conforming sign within the SIB regardless goes to the ARB and then the planning board for review of the design background. That's the current requirement.
And I think the, the way I'm reading that number two is that it just, they're saying it goes to the ARB. It just doesn't come here after.
Right, so, so the first.
The first one, yeah, the first.
It has to go to the planning board.
And that's if it's part of an entire plan. The second one says if it's a sign only approval.
Yeah, I don't have to work this because.
I think the wording's about, I think that's the intent.
That's what I said, it's very confusing.
I think the intent of it is that if it's part of a plan, it has to come to the planning board.
Right, but the ARB can't, it has to change to say the ARB can recommend the zoning officer should the council want to do that. ARB can approve it.
That's what I was going to say.
So I have, and then I'm saying, I'd have to, if it's.
Because they can't.
Yes.
Right, so I would have to, with Kara's help, rework this and say this is the changes, the contradictions, and change to one twenty eight C language, so it's consistent throughout the ordinance. Because one twenty eight C is not in the proposal.
Right, so you're taking away the controls in the SIB basically for design.
It would, yes, it would go back to, the statics of the sign would be the ARB zoning officer.
Well, the zoning, yeah, so the zoning officer, he's not going to judge the statics, so, or she. So that's, that's the difference that I see is like, if, if some of them should come to us, the ARB, because they're looking at the regulations and things. Then all of them should come to us because we're looking at the regulations and things. Just because one is a change of a sign and one is attached to a change of use or something, doesn't mean that you, you want those standards to comply. And the zoning officer is, is not, is just going to say, okay, it meets code well. You know, that's, they're not going to make an aesthetic decision or historical decision or anything. That's not what their job is. So if some of them are supposed, should come to us because it's important they come to us, then all of them should come to us because it's important they come to us. Or none of them should come to us. But the fact that we're just deciding some should come, some should not come, doesn't make sense to me.
I don't think this changes that only some in the SIB would come.
Yeah, because if they already have a sign, let's say they want to change it, it would go to the zoning officer.
It would go to the ARB and then the zoning officer.
Yes.
No, I heard this is, if it complied, they would just go to the zoning officer. If it was an existing business, that nothing was changing, it would just go to the zoning.
I also.
I guess that's my question.
So that's why I just feel like if, if it's, if it's important that we keep the quality of the signs to a certain architectural report standard, then we should see all the signs. And it shouldn't matter whether it's attached to an existing business or it's a new construction.
I, I also feel that in, in paragraph C two, that the requirement to meet within seven days and, and then within three days following the meeting, issue of an approval in writing, the ARB does not have any staff. Who's going to issue that opinion? And I think seven days, there, there isn't a municipal body anywhere that has that kind of time constraint placed on. Now, whether, whether we stood it, the issue about whether or not the planning board reviews ARB decisions or not is completely different. But to require that the ARB take action within seven days is, I think, extreme.
What is it now?
Now we meet on demand.
What I'm saying, like, could it be, could it be forty five, and I'm not saying it is. But I'm saying, is there a timeline now that's in, in the ordinance?
No, there isn't one. Typically what happens is within the period between planning board meetings, if an application is used to the ARB, it's acted on by the ARB prior to the next planning board.
Right, no, I, I was just asking if there was something written in there.
No, so it's usually within two weeks, but like.
But there's nothing that says it has to be. I have no problem giving a timeline, there's nothing.
If you run into, if you run into holidays and things like that.
Yeah, I'm saying, I just wanted to know.
But our whole purpose of, our intention of setting it up this way was to turn it over very quickly for these people. That's why we're doing it this way. So to put that seven days sort of indicates that we're not originally trying to turn it over quickly for these people, that we were treading water, holding them back. So, you know, we're already, our intent of the planning board slash ARB is to turn these things over as fast as we possibly can and make decisions so people can get on with getting the signs.
And the original intent was to speed up.
Yeah, so calling an ARB meeting whenever we get an application was an attempt to not wait to the next planning, but to get it through quickly.
These potential changes could save seven days and many months of time. Originally, so this, what, what, what is this doing?
It's just putting a timeline on us that we can't meet.
Like what we're saying, we are meeting at every time anyway. Because if it's arbitrary, it doesn't really matter, we put a number on it anyway. If we're always meeting that anyway.
Well, if we don't, then we can get.
So I'm saying.
But we're not necessarily meeting seven days. We're typically meeting before the next planning.
So to, within two weeks typically we are.
So, so we're trying to reduce a two week window, but the least we can do is. By seven days, so we're just saving seven days in the rodent of your point last time. It could take months for a, a service or a restaurant to come here. Is this the place we should be focused on the process?
Well, I was going to say, this is reactive to complaints about it taking too long when somebody has a storefront ready to go and then they ask for a sign? No, why don't you ask for your sign in the beginning or in tandem at the same time? So that you can do it the right way. And then when you're ready.
Is there an entity that can help and work with the business to make sure they have?
Design manufacturers are.
Well, not only such as that, but also for the application.
The towns, the hippos, by the way.
It's part of the applica, I mean, it's part of the application, but I mean.
They should do it sooner rather than later. Why wait till the last minute and then, oh, it's taking two weeks, you're killing it. Oh, not, you could have done this two months ago.
Yeah, I think, I think the process does need to be improved. I'm not sure if this is.
Certainly, I don't think this is the place.
Well, I understand. What the board's feeling is, they're saying, don't change it. It's the number one recommendation, but should the council want to change it, I'm going to have to rework this with Kara and get this out to the board tomorrow.
So it's understandable.
So that the council has it till Monday, right?
I, I have a secondary question. Why do we feel the need if we say, no, don't change it, do we have to give them an option? They're going to do what they're going to do anyway. We can just, they can just do it against the law.
Because if, if they change it, it shouldn't be confusing. And if they change it, they also have to change other aspects within our land use ordinance to make everything consistent.
They have to, they should.
No, they have to. So that's the legal side of it. They have to change to be able, because then once they do this, if they don't change the others, then they're not implementing our land use.
And they have to make findings, so if there is any inconsistency, they have to make findings. And, and the thought of putting the secondary recommendations in there, if you should have your thoughts heard. And if the initial thought that the majority is saying here is don't change it, all right, that's great. But, you know, the council has the ultimate say in what they want to do and let them hear. I mean, you know, we're on television, we've got two members of council here, of course you can hear it. But you want to have it formally placed on the record, formally provided to them so they can look at it and make those findings to address those inconsistencies that you're looking to address.
And I just want to point out that when the District Management Corporation formed the Architectural Review Board, the board met once a month. And if you came in beyond the cutoff with a sign application, you waited at least a month before the next hearing. You could be in the next day after the cutoff and it was at least a month. We have significantly shortened that time. And it's not, I mean, very often it is within a week. I think the, the one place where we've, we've dropped the ball is that there's not a written report from the Architectural Review Board because we have no staff. So I think that's something that we need to work on and, and see what, how we, how we can do that. Because, um, you know, whose, whose job is it to write that report and get that report out to the applicant and the planning board? And right now, we don't have a report. We have the application that we see.
With the recommendation from.
Yeah, with the recommendation. But the recommendation isn't really in writing.
No, I know, the same. The application plus the recommendation is all we have.
So, so we, I, I think what we can do is work, we'll work with Kara and get a template for a referrer so that all that Jenna has to do is plug in the names and addresses and, you know, we have two reports. But the Architectural Review Board does not typically say, no, you can't do that. What they do is they work with an applicant and say, you know, this, this would be better if you did it this way. And very often the sign makers understand what we're saying, agree and convince their client to do it differently. So the, the review board traditionally has made recommendations, not.
Not denied it, yeah. I don't agree. It's been a long time since we actually out-identified it.
So, um. So we're going, moving there.
So what, what is it?
So we're moving.
You're going to do the same thing as the other one? Is you're going to make, put some stuff together to send to us to all.
I'm going to revise it. Do nothing.
Do nothing, but if you do do something, do it well.
Right, and I'll come out, I'll work with Kara, come out with a word document, gives the board, the board's okay with it. Then it'll be sent to Kevin, then I'll bring counsel through to go.
So I'll, I will move that we do.
Second. Okay, are we ready to?
Chairman Pata?
Yes.
Mr. Vince?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brer?
Yes.
Mr. Dare?
Yes.
Mr. Craster?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Rett?
Yes.
Okay, the last thing I have is that, um, in the approval for the changes at fifty Division Street, a couple of years ago, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, it came to our attention that the deck was in the state of disrepair, needed to be repaired. And we needed an engineer's report determining what the condition of the deck was and was safe. Mike finally got the report and it is ambiguous. Go ahead.
The, the report says that that's a match. It will need lots of repairs, which is obvious if you're going to do it like, you'll see the jacks supporting it and so forth. But the alternate after reading drilling down this report, it says during repairs, cars can use it, but not trucks. Now, that just makes my pencil, because it doesn't.
What's a truck?
What's a truck? Typically, you would say vehicles under ten thousand pounds. If the vehicle's under five thousand, something, so you could say, okay, most vehicles using it can buy. We don't have to worry about regulating this. But we don't have that. And then on top of it, there's an unsafe structure notice because the deck was physically, pieces were falling off it. Large chunks were dropped. So I had an email out to the same group asking, asking Kara, I don't. Is the planning board going to be taking, dealing with this issue? Is that where we're going?
Yeah, I think we need, we need to ask for clarification in the report and then move from there.
So which in nine of their resolution talks about the applicant shall provide the borough with a copy of all reports inspection results generated with regard to the deck at least once every two years, I'm paraphrasing. But the last sentence says the board shall be permitted to make requests of the applicant as a result of the content of any report or inspection results. So it's clearly laid out in there. This body has the ability to ask for that, so I think that makes sense.
What came up, it came in my engineering plan report that the deck looked visually terrible. And the response from the applicant is the insurance requires the deck to be inspected every two years. And they would provide the inspection report, saying it's safe. Well, it happened that two years went by, we never got an inspection report. I inquired, we never got it, so it became a violation issue. So it was a violation issue for a year or two, and then bits and chunks of concrete fell off it. Then it became an unsafe structure. And then the applicant got a structural engineer involved and write the reports, we had additional copy up. A, a, a report was issued in August, September of last year, but it wasn't signed and sealed. We didn't get a signed seal copy until in February of this year.
From the engineer?
From the engineer. It was never signed and sealed. And I think the engineer, SSP's either hired engineers involved. And I, uh, construction officials talked to the developer saying, report is challenging, it doesn't say this. And then the developers said he'll get on that. And I've communicated this to Marcus, but I have not directly communicated this issue with the structural engineer. I brought this to Kara's attention, Chairman, Mayor's attention, layer this week. But we had escrow issues that dissolved, so I jumped on it, asking for clarification, help on this issue. Because it's, in my opinion, a public safety issue.
So aside from getting clarification about the engineer's report and what a truck is, the deck is being used right now, right? So is it being repaired right now or is it just being used right now?
It's being supported. It's supposed to be repaired. There's a report which, and the board wants that to certainly have a digital copy.
Supported is not repaired, so it's not being repaired?
I don't know this. I had not spent the time out there. I know there's lollybumps temporarily supporting it.
That could be a question the board can ask.
Because I just think it's a safety issue if it's, if the report is unsafe.
If they have an unsafe structure.
It needs to be closed down. So you can tell you exactly what happens when you have an unsafe structure.
And then, and then the other concern is regardless of what comes back as clarification, is there going to be some standing there making sure that this doesn't happen? That's the last question. How are they going to address?
Closing down.
But it's the only real.
It's, because we don't have the report, now we have the report and I find that, I'm still thinking this is worth for clarification. There's a stop work order because of this not addressing this condition.
A stop work order on the, on the work they're doing on the building?
On the inside of the fit out, not the correct. What happened is is the conditional approval based on putting those two office spaces underneath. Well, two years passed, this report was never received. Yeah, this wasn't being provided. So the construction official issued a stop work order because prior approvals were not being met. The conditions of the planning board resolution were not being met. So right now, as we speak, there's a stop work order. I'm, I'm not saying it's stopped works. I'm not saying.
There's an order issued.
That's, that's all I'm saying, so.
And I thought we were issued for the area that probably is safe, but the area that's unsafe is still being used.
Right, that's supposed to encourage them to.
I think what we're saying is the condition hasn't been met because the report is inadequate.
Who, who, who hired the person from January? Did we hire this person or did it?
The applicants hired this person.
Okay, all right. Okay, I got it. I, I just, I'm going to relay a little bit of this interesting story here. I happened to get my taxes prepared in that building that uses that parking lot. One of the people there had their car partially pulled through the piece of that parking lot, had to be dragged down with a tow truck. So there's obviously issues there. And, and, and the. And, and, and the, you know, I understand the applicant situation, so I just wanted to know if, if we had sent somebody there to look at that, what the report might look like.
Well, the construction office, including the fire marshal, looked at the huge pieces falling down. And that's why the unsafe notice was issued.
So then unsafe notice should have stopped them from parking on the, yeah, deck though, right?
I haven't answered that question.
How many people still live in that deck? Okay. I'm not asking you.
Yes.
Asking.
Well, it's that and not the.
What is that unsafe designation allowed?
There's a make peace order. There's a make peace order.
If it's supposed to be.
Meaning you cannot use the deck?
That's correct.
So that needs to be enforced. There we go.
I guess my question is, what is, what is our involvement from here forward on this, as the planning board? And we don't enforce these things.
It's a stop work order based on the condition of the planning board not being met.
Well, we approved that addition.
Right.
And we could send a letter asking for additional information based upon the report based upon that condition.
So the actual condition of the deck and making sure no cars park there, that's enforcement?
Yeah, so we have nothing.
Ours is really, we are allowed to stop work because they didn't make the conditions we reached.
So we could stop work on the inside portion, and they stopped work already?
We didn't. We can't stop the work. They stopped the work.
They did, okay, so. So what are you looking for from us?
To see if the board wants me to reach out to the structural engineer and find out the way in run of this issue, or the board wants to deal directly on this issue and not my office. That's the real issue. For example, if the engineer comes back and says.
Isn't this a burden?
Well, let's go back to the condition again. Let's, let's, let's read the condition. Condition says, the board shall be permitted to make requests of the applicant as a result of the contents of any report or inspection results. So this board.
We can make the request to shut down the deck.
Shut down it.
What I'm saying is.
We can put any request you want in there, and it can go through Mike as a board engineer. I mean, that's, I think that's do, that's doable. Whatever request you wanna make.
In the end.
That, that isn't, let me put it this way, that is a very generous interpretation of that language, but.
Well, I'm just saying, like, someone should say, close the deck.
Yeah, I mean, we have, toll 13, how many people here, we're talking about an unsafe deck that people should not be on, on record, and nobody has a problem with that? As a taxpayer, and as somebody who pays taxes in this town, I have a huge problem that we're allowing residents, and outside residents to go park in a deck that is unsafe.
We declared that.
I mean, come on, guys. And yet, we're talking about what we have the authority to do, and should we get clarification on a report? I mean, you know, I'm not, that really infuriates me. I mean, you should have two council members here that are infuriated with the fact that we have residents and outside residents and people coming in and our town into a deck that is unsafe. How is that okay with anybody else sitting in this room?
So that's why I would like to put in that our request is to stay closed the deck until it is repaired and deemed safe.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the planning board, let's not get involved with this, because passing it there.
Well, then, as the engineer, whether you deem it safe, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, let's rail down the end number. If he comes up with a number like 5,000 pounds.
But it's not even safe for cars.
That's where I'm gonna go. If I have that in writing, then I immediately go to the borough and say, we can't enforce this.
I think Al will give us.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, Al, but hey, you, you as an engineer, like, you're putting your engineer hat on. You're looking at the deck, and we'll come up with a recommendation of, of what should be allowed or not allowed on the deck.
No, I'm saying, I would reach out to the structural engineer.
Okay.
Tell him the deficiencies in the report that can cause us. And specifically ask him, what is the deck, the deck safe to use? What, what is the weight?
Very specifically.
What is the weight that the deck is safe?
But who issued the unsafe order?
The construction official.
So, so I, I guess here's my question, here's my question. He issued the unsafe order. Is the engineer's report, can he, what, what authority, at what point, if they have an engineering report that says it's safe to use for cars, but not trucks? This very broad, yeah. Can, can the borough shut the deck if they have an engineering report that says, I have a report that says it's safe to use?
I don't think any of us know that, and I think that's not a direct, the construction official, borough council, I think that may be the way.
I'm not to take anything away from Mike, I don't think the report coming from Mike is gonna supersede the structural engineer's report.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to.
I would like to get involved in this issue, but I need the planning board's support to get involved in this condition, this issue. What I'm saying is, I have a report, the condition, and to me, it's lacking. Results are unacceptable. So I would like to reach out to the structural engineer.
So you can get a report that you can actually get something?
Get a clarification on this, and then get it to the council and the planning board and see if it's 5,000 pounds, my initial, that's, that's not acceptable because a lot of vehicles, take a trucks, electric cars, as we know, Lisa says, are over 5,000 pounds. Therefore, that's enforceable, it shouldn't be. And let the borough lead, keep the lead on this, but.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Eventually, the borough is going to have to act on this, not the planning.
The question is, why is Paul involved in this? I'm trying to get to say, because the planning board wants me involved in this.
So if, and I would like to see the report. I mean, I.
I can circulate it. Deirdre has it, Bernie has it, Kara has it. I can circulate the report.
It's very general.
Okay, and I can send out the whole board, the whole.
But I would like to see our construction official's report.
Well, the unsafe notice is attached.
It's attached to this?
Don't wave the bat head, sorry.
It's not in that, so, Deirdre, it's not in that.
It's an email?
Yes, it's an email that you received. I copied the unsafe notice, the resolution, my report noting, it's part of this thing, is my report said the deck looks terrible. It was a condition, and I think the transcript says that the board.
If we get that report, we can make some.
I think the transcript says that the board gets to see this report every two years. That's what the other thing said. It's safe to use, we're gonna report every two years, saying it's safe. We never got the report, we get this report, and.
So that's, and how is it safe to use if concrete's fallen off?
I don't, I can't answer that.
But it's not safe according to our infrastructure officials, so that goes back to the borough.
So I won't park there. Why am I blaming you?
I don't think anybody in this room's parking there moving forward.
I'm so.
Why is it?
It's not only that, it's, the cars are all parked underneath it too.
Yeah.
So there's, so there's a stop work order on the inside. For him to be able to start working again, what does he have to do?
We have to get this report.
Get the report.
Get the report.
We have permitted a stop work order.
I just have a question. Other than the fact that I've been involved in this back and forth for about two years and cannot understand why enforcement hasn't shut the damn thing down. In a month, we've got a bike race.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have illegal parking on that deck. And if that deck pancakes, like New York, who is that liability?
I, I've written many emails recommending it not be used, it's resolved. I'm doing everything I.
But I'm going back to our construction official saying it is an unsafe deck. They should have closed it down.
I think your recommendation that we recommend opposing, and at the same time, we allow Mike to do some additional research. That's probably what we can do on this board, right?
I think we can close it.
Yeah, well, we can't close it.
No, we can't. But the construction official can.
But we can make a recommendation, I mean, someone working here, follow the construction official's recommendation that it's unsafe. You have a good truck up there.
And I guess that's why I asked.
It's unsafe. It's a car fire over top of the deck.
That's where the structural engineer's report comes from, because if the structural engineer is saying it is safe, now, I'm not saying that, that means it's safe. But if he's saying it's safe because, I don't, like, I'm not structural engineer. So I don't know if it can be structural, it's safe when cars are falling through it, if he had that information.
It's certainly not safe for a fire truck to go up and put out a car fire on the upper deck. Because no trucks are allowed.
No, fires can't fit.
They had one fire truck that will, I believe.
We have a pickup truck, and that would fit. So I can.
It's a truck.
So I can tell you that the borough has a structural engineer working on this.
Okay.
And that the, that the review that we hired, then a review that was done around six months ago. And that the structural engineer is gonna be doing a second review, as it stands currently, to see what.
So six months ago, what did he say?
Six months ago, six months ago, it was that it was capable of being used. The reason why the order was still, you know, the, the construction official's order was there was so that the, the whole work was being done. It could, the unsafe structure order was still up. But that it could be used at that time because it was deemed that it was safe to use. The, the order was up so that way, it, everything would be fixed. And once everything was fixed, then the unsafe structure order would be done. The outside structural engineer that looked at it said that at the time, other review, that it was okay to use. And that every, that other thing, that other things need to be taken care of, obviously, to.
So they had, their, their, the developer had his own guy look at it. He hired somebody, then the borough hired somebody too? And they both said that it was structurally okay to use?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, then, if we have. Wait, wait, so then I'm, I'm back to Mike. If we, if the borough has already hired a structural engineer to look at this.
Then why?
What does, what does Mike, why does Mike need a role in this?
Well, the issue is, I haven't seen it, but the report was a Monday visual inspection. In my understanding, the borough reports this as terminal cancer.
What happens with these decks is that the smoke.
So do we have a report?
Metal degrades, and the decks go down. That's basically.
Yeah, as soon as you have exposed metal, it's, it's not done.
And so you haven't get reviewed again?
Yes.
Playing in, uh, structural?
When is that supposed to happen?
I, I'm gonna find out. But the borough has, the borough has retained our own structural engineer.
So the borough is actually.
So, oh, so we, so are we waiting for that structural engineer report? Which probably will be less vague than the.
They've already issued it, they've already reported back to the borough six months ago.
And they're doing another review?
The report that, this vague report, is it from, is it from six months ago or prior to six months ago?
No, what, what happened is, the unsafe notice came out, right? SSP did a report saying, and said that a structural engineer will be reviewing it. Will be happy to develop. That's the report.
And when did that come out? When did the SSP report come out?
It came out August and September, right?
So more than six months ago?
Yes.
So the most recent report is the borough report? And he said, it's absolutely fine.
The borough structural engineer, so we should keep the unsafe order in place, but that it was usable.
For?
Unsafe but usable.
Usable for what?
The report indicated that, that to keep the, we did hire, so we hired an outside engineer. The work, work is needed, but at the time of the report, it was usable. So that the, our, our structural engineer that we hired said that it is usable. Said that to keep the order up until the work is completed, but at, at the time, six months ago, it was usable. And that there will be a second report that's to be done by our borough hired structural engineer.
So can you ask that structural engineer to be a little bit more specific on what usable means?
Well.
Which is basically what we're asking about the truck versus the car. What is usable?
Well, I'm going back. My experience has been, there's no, these things is pancake. They're good, they're good, and they're not. There's no like, it's all, it's leaning, leaning. So, and that's where I think you see the language being used, because it's very, very difficult to say. In seven days, four hours, it's gonna collapse.
I think it's kind of clear in both reports that work needs to be done, and.
If it's not being done, then the stop work order should hold on the other parts.
Correct.
Yes, and in abundance and caution, I would like to see exactly what's the weight limit. To answer Colin's question, if I else, can this be used by the general public?
And that we can get, play a clarification on what a truck is.
If.
No, a safe model truck, it's a weight issue.
Yeah, it's a total weight, so guys, even though you're saying, one car, yes, cars can use it, but what's the total weight that each level is allowed? When you're talking about engineering of a, of a parking deck, you're not just talking about individual vehicles. It is a total weight limit. And that's what happens with the pancaking is, you have, so when you do have the exposure from that cement and everything falling, every single hour and minute, that deck is deteriorating. So six months is a, is something that was deteriorating. Looks like something that could be 100 years and something else when you're talking about concrete and with the metal and the, on the parking deck. It is a very different type of construction, and that type of construction deteriorates extremely fast once exposed. And if what everybody's saying is, and I haven't been back there to actually see it, if there is cement falling, it is an exposed. So my, for me, as a planning board member, the only thing I would request, this is the only power we have, like to know what is the total weight that that structural engineer is saying is allowed on that deck?
Can we get that from our hired, not the planning board one? The borough hired, or not the developer hired one?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's the thing it pays for, is to make those recommendations.
It'd be interesting to get the answer from both engineers.
And how we're allowing an unsafe order to stand?
This is what I can't understand. If there's an unsafe order, then why are you letting anybody near that deck?
Well, it's up to us.
Yeah, that's, I just wanna go on record.
The board's blessing, Mike can get involved with this, so I can ask the questions, and then success. I think they're very good questions.
Well, I would also like you to read the report of the borough engineer.
I can reach out to Roger. I, I've heard about the report, I haven't seen the report. I know the report was done by a reputable engineer.
Yeah, so I would like you to read that report also.
I'm just saying that we want the answers that we want. It's tough, challenging, without a very, very exhaustive inspection.
I don't, I don't necessarily know that there are answers that we want because we essentially can't do anything about it anyway. But I think it's very important for the borough to take proper action to protect the people who might be using that deck. And that's gotta be our recommendation. And, and whether or not it continues to work on the interior of the building is almost irrelevant at this point.
I think that's all.
Well, there's a.
Stop that, to pull the speed to the fire and get that done.
There's a stop work order, but it's my understanding it's applying violation penalties. And that's the way it is right now. I don't know the specifics, I have.
Okay, so, so if we can get the, I think, is there a consensus that we let Mike? So good, let's move on, because we're going in a circle. Okay. I have no further comments.
You made up all the reasons we got it without any comments.
This is a Michael. On a positive note, we have two ribbon cuttings this weekend, and I wanna be sure that you're all aware. On Saturday at noon, we had the new hot dog emporium, forget the name of it. And at 1 o'clock, we have the sticks, this is our line of trucks, as we can tell. Just something positive, we've got some storefronts being rehabbed now, we have some leases signed. Not, store's not ready to open, but in the works. But these two are coming, they've been open, but they're having their formal grand openings on Saturday. If you're around, be welcome to come. And I hope we'll have a lot more as the vacancies disappear.
Yes. I will open it up to the public. Hearing the public.
81th Central Street.
Will you stand, please? You make me faster.
I just wanted to update Bernie and the board on the conversation that we had last week. Okay, first, I wanted to announce that Daniel Jevits has retired from zoning work after over a quarter of a century on board. Big shoes to fill.
Very big.
About two years ago or so, we met as a joint, a joint group in this room to talk about the POR zone. And we've been dealing with it, dealing with it, and like Roger said a couple of weeks ago, we got a lot of things that we're trying to do, and we're not finishing anything. I talked to Mike, and I said, you know, the easiest way for us to handle this is just go to Schedule A on the box where it says two families allowed. So the, at our board meeting, we had three resolutions that I, that I brought up. And all of our agreement that all we need to do is change Schedule A to allow two families in the.
In the POR zone.
POR zone. Quick acclaim. Okay, we had another motion. This motion was basically memorialized action that we took in August of last year to get an interim zoning officer. Our zoning officer is very new, very, and he has no experience. Some mistakes that he made, and things that cost us a run, and we can't continue to do this. Um, some mistakes that we made, and things that's cost us, we're on, and we can't continue to do this. I need an experienced zoning officer while John is getting up to speed and gets certified. The other thing we have to take a look at is tenure. We want an unqualified, uncertified zoning officer with tenure. So, um, we're gonna bring that, we're gonna send a resolution to Mayor Council. We do need an experienced zoning officer. Even if we have to share, as we said before, we are so busy. Our zoning officer should be, be a one-legged man in an ass-kicking contest, or we're not getting the results that we're paying for. Also, when we develop the specifications for the zoning officer, uh, tenants at these meetings, planning board, and zoning board should be required. Frank, up until the last couple years, came to everyone, his predecessor, Gary Hazuka, his predecessor, Matt Gruffalo, always came to all the meetings, because everything that we do is predicated on his denial. So, we need him there to explain why he denied a certain application. The third, um, motion that we brought up, but we took it back, was to get a, um, qualified or replace the code enforcement officer. Um, and this is having, we just talked about it, you know, of the things that are going on that aren't being corrected. We recently had fourteen homes in my neighborhood between Southway Street, Second, Third, and Vets refurbished. Not one permit sought by a developer. I called John on two of them, and he immediately stopped work, uh, or issued stop work orders. One of them, um, somebody close to me, they was, they're expanding, uh, a house, they're putting addition on a house. When John went out there and saw, he said, "Oh, all they were doing was putting in a new deck." I said, "Well, it's an expansive and non-conforming use." He said, "What are you talking about?" I said, "It's a two-family in an R2 zone." And we went back, or he went back and checked, he said, "It's a one-family." I said, "Check the two meters." And what basically happened was, they were given permission illegally to convert that house from one to a two-family. And it's been that way about thirty years. The only thing they have to do now is get that, um, on the tax books as a two-family. They are paying their rental fees, so the new owner is doing it straight. He bought it as a two-family, but it's never been legally converted. We also had another house that was being expanded, another expansive and non-conforming use. The code enforcement officer recorded that. So, so, John, do what you have to do. Those are the three things of, yeah, but one, we brought, we withdrew the motion to ask the council for that because one of our members is in that business, and he said, "There's a pool, there's a need, yes, they. There's this many people who are qualified or want the job because of pensions and other things. They're going through in the public sector, but we do need a code enforcement officer." Uh, we really, really do. I see some of the stuff that goes on just in my neighborhood that wouldn't be allowed in other places. And Steve, uh, when he was there, he taught a lot of it, and made people do the right thing. So, I implore the council, planning board to back us, and implore the council to fill that spot. We talked about it. It's a budget, uh, slot, we got the money for it, we need it, and we do need a qualified, um, zoning officer. Um, I, and I talked to the borough council about this, and I think Bernie, you and I talked about this earlier. Second Street, the north side of Second Street is a business zone, although the repomodors of homes or places on the, on the street are residential. You have Taylor Oil, which takes up a big portion, but in front of Taylor Oil are homes, and all the way down to Breach Street are homes. And some of those people have been there fifty, sixty years, but it's, the north side is a, um, business zone, the south side is R2. I'd like to move that line, the business line, behind the properties, so that Taylor Oil and everybody else, he's in the business zone, and the homes are in a residential zone. Okay, and I don't know my wife is looking at me and say, "You're supposed to buy me dinner." Uh, Bernie, you and I talked about, um, taking a look at FAR, and I think it's something that we need to have another joint meeting on. I've talked to a couple of our board members, and we're in agreement with you. So, it's something that we need to speak about. And the last thing is parking. When somebody comes before us, they wanna convert, they wanna build a building, they wanna convert to a, a whatever, there's parking for it. What we have seen predominantly over on Second and Third Street is, um, the developer now charging for that parking. And I can see it if it's a tech or you give them a garage, but it's mandated that you must provide X amount of parking spaces. So, what's happening is, the people don't wanna park there, they've been parking on Second, Third, Southway Street, and I'm taking away the spaces of the residents. Uh, earlier this year, November, I went before the board, uh, council, and talked about it, and, um, we got an ordinance for residential parking only. They, it was effective January, they just started enforcing it. Uh, two weeks ago, talking to my neighbors, between Second and Third, there were thirty-eight cars without, um, resident stickers parked on Second, Third Street at a time when they should have had, should not have been there. So, I talked with our man who works here about it, and they did go out and, uh, paid ticket about a dozen people. But we have to clarify, if you have to do it, if, if the ordinance says you have to provide a hundred and twenty parking spaces, you shouldn't be able to charge those, the residents for a hundred and twenty. It would give rise to converting a house to a, from a one to a two-family and charge the tenant to park in the driveway. So, it's something that we need to talk about as, as a team, as a planning and zoning board team, and borough council, to get some of these things done.
I think, I think that parking issue we, we need to look at, and we've, we've had that discussion here with applicants where we asked them if they're gonna charge for parking, because we know that that drives tenants out. I don't know that we have.
I think we made the last one a condition that they, yeah, the last one we made a condition that they couldn't charge.
So, we're working on it, and, and we'll have the FAR discussion again. We've had it before. And we will have the POR uses, we'll have that discussion again too, because the way, the way it was written is that you had to have a non-residential use only on the first floor, you couldn't have it on the second floor. And my feeling is, along with yours, that you should have, be able to have any combination of residential and non-residential uses in a building, and also in the current market forces, um, I feel like we should allow two families.
So, wait, we've been hit over the last several years when we discussed this, and the business paradigm has changed so much that you don't need an office space on there. But Bernie, the Vado accountant can run a tax business from the front seat of his car at an eye back. It's changed. So, we have a glut on office space in town, and everybody, people are coming, whether it's on Main Street, West High Street, uh, Grove Street, are coming to make the changes.
Yeah, we, we need to keep pace with.
With what's happening for a while. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? We'll close the public section, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will, will you adjourn?
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All who oppose?
Thank you.